I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I please remind everybody to put your cellphones on silent? We've got a nice crowd here today, so we don't want to have all the cellphones going off and congratulations at the same time. Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Mr. Lemack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holstein.
Here.
Mr. Weindell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum. Thank you very much. Good evening. We have a distinguished crowd here this evening, lots of good things happening. But before we do that, our regular business is that the first thing on the first meeting of the month is what we call public comments. And this gives individuals an opportunity to come up and give an opinion, ask a question, share an event, anything that they would like to share with the community. The only thing that we ask is that no one come up to speak on something that is on a public hearing. When that occurs, we will call, you can come up and speak at that time. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, and we usually start with the first row. But I know there's a lot of people here, so if you were here to speak in the public comments, if you just raise your hand. Seeing none.
Wow.
I must be doing something right. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go right on with the regular meeting. We're going to start with our presentations, and the first one is our Davie Let's Talk Business recognition. And I'd like to call Debbie Thomas up, or no, Ariana is going to do it this time. Thank you, I'm sorry. Can't keep track of you girls.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council Members. I'm Ariana Brucenyo, Public Relations Assistant. And I am excited to present our second Let's Talk Business of the Day, spotlighting the Davie Small Business Bit by Bit Therapeutic Riding Center, just off of Flamingo Road at 3141 Southwest 118 Terrace. We're ecstatic to share our Let's Talk Business program for its second quarter, which allows us to recognize local Davie businesses at our Town of Davie Council meetings and spotlight all the great services they provide in our community. Bit by Bit has been in the Town of Davie for 13 years, with one mission in mind, to help children and individuals with special needs using the healing powers of a horse. What started by a passionate group of parents with two horses and four children now provides approximately 6,000 physical, occupational, and speech therapies a year. To accommodate their growth, Bit by Bit's horse herd now includes Gypsy, Chubby, Domino, Willow, Dakota, and Levi. Their sessions are unique, utilizing a treatment strategy called hippotherapy, which utilizes equine movement as an integral part of a patient's intervention program, and is designed to help serve individuals experiencing autism, Down Syndrome, fine motor skill delays, sensory disorders, and more to accomplish their goal of healing with the help of a horse. As a nonprofit, Bit by Bit also provides volunteer opportunities to local high schoolers, including Western High School, where students are involved in caring for the horses, cleaning stables, and assisting staff in the office or with children on horseback. Not only do students walk away with completed hours, but they also are rewarded with free riding lessons. I welcome you to settle up and enjoy this video that highlights all the services Bit by Bit provides. Thank you.
I'm Denise Panarello, Executive Director with Bit by Bit Medical Therapeutic Riding Center and Let's Talk Business. Bit by Bit has been in the Town of Davie for approximately 13 years. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and where we provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy, utilizing the healing powers of a horse. Bit by Bit was founded by an occupational therapist Kathleen Pegues and a physical therapist Susan March after they had witnessed the impact within one session that working with a horse with a child with special needs had, and they decided that they wanted to start an entire program based on that. And they started with two horses and four children, and we have grown to providing close to 6,000 therapy sessions a year. I started as an occupational therapy student. I did my Level 2 fieldwork here a little over 12 years ago, and I never left. I fell in love with a horse, and it just was never, there was never an option for me to go anywhere else. Horses have a natural healing power about them, just being around them. And we take that a step further, and to where not only does it impact their psychological and mental health and well-being, we also use it for a physical impact as well. I encourage people to come during our sessions and to see it in person on the impact it has on the children, because sometimes just describing it doesn't know justice. We have approximately 200 volunteers at any given time throughout our system. Because we rely so heavily on our volunteers, and we are so appreciative of everything they do for us, we do quarterly volunteer appreciations. We also provide them with free riding lessons. I'm most proud of our growth as an organization and the community that we serve. Our riders make significant progress with us, and I love seeing the progress that they make on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis. Some of our patients have been with us for five to 10 years, and watching them grow and turn into adults who are productive members of their community as well. Healing with the help of a horse, it's always been our phrase, and we love it. And it just sums up our mission and vision in one phrase.
Bit by Bit! Please join me in inviting Bit by Bit's Executive Director Denise Panarello to say a few words and accept the Let's Talk Business Award.
I just want to say thank you so much to the Town of Davie for this recognition. It's an honor, and it's been a privilege to serve the community in which I live as well. And so, thank you so much. I welcome all of you to come for a visit at any time also. Thank you. That's what Davie's all about. Thank you very much. You do a great job. Our next item, number two under Presentations, is the Youth Education and Safety Advisory Committee Water Safety Poster Contest from Parks and Recreation. I have a whole crew coming up. Chad, you want to introduce those that are helping me?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, Administration, and members of the public. Chad Pezal, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department Assistant Director. With me tonight to help present our awards are Fitness and Aquatic Coordinator Ian Forst, Crew Leader Rashawn Williams, and Recreation Coordinator Kevin Favada. The month of May is recognized as National Water Safety Month, and we are proud to partner with the Town of Davie's Youth Education and Safety Committee to host the 2023 Water Safety Poster Contest. As you know, the Town of Davie's Safer by Four Initiative is an award-winning program spearheaded by the Town's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, Fire, and Police Departments that focuses on safe sleep and water safety education to ensure our children reach their fourth birthday. Drowning remains the leading cause of unintentional injury-related death in children under the four, under the age of four. Through the Water Safety Poster Contest, we engage the community, specifically elementary school children, about the importance of water safety education. I would like to invite the Youth Education and Safety Advisory Committee Chair, Tim Curtin, to come up to discuss some of the details of this year's contest and announce the winners selected by the committee, who will be presented by our team with a certificate of appreciation, a free swim lesson session, and a gift card. Tim?
Thank you. Could you introduce the board members that are here, too?
Yes, yes, Mayor Paul, thank you, and Councilmembers. We appreciate this time. This year's poster contest, I'll get to that in a second. This year's poster contest theme is Swim Smart, and we received over 40 submissions from residents attending elementary schools throughout Davie. There were three categories: kindergarten in first grade, second and third grade, and fourth and fifth grade. Many of the posters are displayed throughout the room back here and will remain on display throughout the month of May at the Fitness and Aquatic Center. So I do want to introduce...
I have to say, these posters were phenomenal. The children originated them and followed through on their own. They're really original. Dr. Arlene Amaran, Youth Education and Safety.
Well done.
Thank you.
So tonight, we're pleased to have four out of the six first and second place runner-up winners with us tonight, which we will now recognize. For the kindergarten, in first place, Malia Mitchell. For second and third grade, in second place, the runner-up was Isabella Manchin. For the fourth and fifth place categories, the second place runner-up, Leila Johnson. And I believe the first place for fourth and fifth grade is here now, Curverly Joseph. And thank you for this opportunity to present the 2023 Water Safety Poster Contest winners as awarded by the Youth Education and Safety Advisory Committee. Be sure to stop by the Pine Island Fitness and Aquatic Center to view all the submissions throughout the month of May. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
How beautiful.
The posters are fabulous, and we're so happy that so many of the students were able to be here with us today. This is what we love to do the most. The young people are our future, and recognizing them is so important. We're going to get a picture of all the students together. They're going. Got them. I'm just going to wait a second so we don't take away from our next presentation. The next presentation is the Mayor's Scholarship recipients. It's always a pleasure reviewing the scholarship applications and, excuse me, Carol. It's always a great thing to be able to read these, the accomplishments of our future leaders. The resumes and applications are truly inspiring, and they give me hope for a very bright future. So we go today from the youngest right up through high school. Hopefully, these outstanding individuals return to Davie to preserve, to pursue their dreams after graduation from college. This year, I'm proud to recognize two individuals with big dreams and aspirations. Megan Olivero, Megan, are you here? Just listen to some of these things that these young ladies have accomplished. Ms. Olivero is the founder of Western High School's first law club, Aspects of Law, it's called, which now has over 80 members. She has a passion for law, politics, and public service, and for the past four years has devoted her time to educating the student body on all political and legal career opportunities. Megan is also the co-founder and vice president of the Do Something Club, vice president of marketing for Western High, DECA, the Distributive Education Clubs of America. Megan also has been class vice president and currently serves as the student body president. That's this graduating class, so we have a future politician, too, maybe here. Currently, she's an intern for State Representative Roba Bartleman with a plan of majoring in public relations with a minor in public science. Truly an outstanding young lady. Ms. Portal is the co-president of the Key Club at Western High School and has spent countless hours working with local nonprofit organizations such as Nourishing Lives Food Bank, local animal shelters, and beach cleanup efforts. She is also the co-founder and co-president of the Psychology Club, vice president of the Brace Club, and member of Host of Future Health Professionals, Allied Health Medical Program, DECA, and is a Brace cadet. National Voices for Education, Equality and Enlightenment, and a member of Do Something, where she developed an anti-stress social media campaign that focused on the promotion of self-care, specifically during midterms, but I'm sure that goes a lot further in these days than just the midterms. She's committed to Florida State University, where she plans to double major in biology and sociology, and join an environmentalist club and the debate club. Outstanding young lady. I have for both of these young ladies a check for $500, which has no strings attached. You may use it as any way you wish. Hopefully, anywhere from clothes to books, whatever you need to make your mark on your first year of college. And also, your letter telling you that you have won this event, signed by myself. So, Mr. Lemack, if you would hand this to these two young ladies. I just love going up and down the stairs.
Y'all want to take a picture?
Sure.
It's always great when you can recognize individuals, and we are doing a lot of that tonight, and now. I don't see anything that needs to be tabled or withdrawn. We're going to go to the consent agenda. I'm going to pull one through eight, eight proclamations, 25, 26, and 27. That's all Davie has to do with the, when we go to the public hearing. What? First one that we're going to take is Nova Southeastern University Men's Basketball Team. What an honor to have some of these young men here that have made us look so great in the nation. National champions, Nova Southeastern University Basketball Team. I'm going to have Vice Mayor read this. We're going to invite Mike Monomay, the Director of NSU Athletics and Associate Vice President for Advancement, representing the men's basketball team, and NSU Media Team, Joe Donzelli, Assistant Director of Public Relations. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Davie, Florida, recognize rare athletic achievement and give special honor and commendation to those athletic teams that through hard work, determination, and extraordinary efforts have distinguished themselves among their competitors. And whereas one sex exemplary team is the 2023 Men's Basketball Team from Nova Southeastern University, known as NSU, and whereas the NSU Men's Basketball Team, known as the Sharks, made history going undefeated during the 2023 season in amassing a 67-1 record over the past two seasons. Whereas the NSU Men's Basketball Team obtained a number-one ranking in the NCAA Division II and maintained that ranking throughout the 2023 season. And whereas the NSU Men's Basketball Team won the Sunshine State Conference Championship, making it to the 2023 NCAA Division II Men's Basketball Tournament. And whereas the NSU Men's Basketball Team defeated all opponents to capture for the first time ever the NCAA Division II Men's Basketball Championship, also known as March Madness, and whereas Jim Crutchfield, the Sharks' head coach, was named Coach of the Year by the National Association of Basketball Coaches, and whereas starting forward RJ Sunahara, Sunahera, excuse me, a redshirt junior, was named the National Association of Basketball Coaches Player of the Year. Whereas the achievement of the 2023 NSU Men's Basketball Team is something all of South Florida, especially the Town of Davie, home of Nova Southeastern University, can take pride in this historic accomplishment, setting an example of excellence that all athletic teams aspire to but so few ever choose, achieve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Davie do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4, 2023, as Nova Southeastern University Sharks Men's Basketball Team Day.
Fin's up.
Mayor Paul, distinguished members of the council, Michael Momoney, proud resident of Davie and also Director of Athletics, Associate Vice President, Nova Southeastern. We too are very proud to wear the jersey of the Town of Davie, even though it says NSU or the Sharks. We're out there representing, I think, what's best in this town and what's best of Nova Southeastern. We always talk about being in the business of education. We just do it in a little different way in teaching life lessons to these young men and women who are now called champions. I'd like to introduce Coach Nick Smith to introduce a few of our players here with us today. Thank you.
Mayor Paul and Town Council, thank you very much for having me. I'm Nick Smith. I am a former player of NSU Men's Basketball and now current assistant coach. With me today is four of our national champions. We have Tommy Sala, who's from Lakewood, Ohio, RJ Sunahara, who is our National Player of the Year. of the year from Bay Village, Ohio, Will Yocum, All-American from Delaware, Ohio, and Shay Hunter's a local guy from St. Thomas Aquinas.
There must be something in the water in Ohio.
What are they feeding you?
I'm not gonna say where I'm from or where the head coach is from, but, you know, we even let some of these Pittsburgh guys in with us. But couldn't be more proud again, these young, young men in particular, they do it well. Obviously, you got to see it a little bit on the court. And we talk about not only what they do, but how they do it and how they represent the university. They also have a 3.3 grade point average, and every single one of them have graduated that were seniors to be. So, we're certainly proud, and they will be great citizens. And hopefully, we all got to learn a little bit tonight, being at your town hall meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. This is very exciting. Just every time you think of it, a team from Nova in Davie, Florida, national champions. Hip hip hooray!
And before we get to the next one, Mayor Paul, we have the commemorative basketball game ball with the scores on there with Coach's signature.
Oh, that's more of a...
Display that proudy for us. Thank you.
We certainly will. Thank you. Wow. And not to be outdone. May I have a motion to approve the Nova Southeastern University Women's Swimming Team?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I think we have tonight Ben Hewitt, the head coach. Is that who's accepting for us? And you want to bring the team up? You can do that. Whereas the mayor and town council of the town of Davie, Florida, recognize rare athletic achievement and give special honor and commendation to those athletic teams that through hard work, determination, and extraordinary efforts have distinguished themselves among their competitors. And whereas one such exemplary team is the 2023 Women's Swimming Team from Nova Southeastern University, of course, known as NSU. And whereas the NSU Women's Swimming Team, known as the Sharks, made history, ranking number-one in amassing 536.5 points in the 2023 NCAA Division II Championship Swim Meet. And whereas the NSU Women's Swimming Team earned its first-ever team national championship along with 11 NCAA individual national championships. And whereas the NSU Swimming Team member and sophomore Emily Trashman delivered a dominant performance, winning six national titles in the 1,000 freestyle, 200 freestyle, 500 freestyle, 1650 freestyle, and was a part of both the 200 and 800 freestyle relay teams. Which one is?
Which?
Who? Is she not here? Oh, my goodness. And whereas NSU coach Ben Hewitt earned the 2023 Sunshine State Conference Coach of the Year for the third consecutive time and a conference-leading fifth time. And whereas the NSU Women's Swimming Team members Emily Trashman and Amelia Ronagall, did I pronounce that correctly, earned the 2023 Sunshine State Conference Swimmer of the Year and Freshman of the Year honors respectfully. Is that a young lady here?
No.
She missed it too. Okay. Whereas the NSU Women, Women's Swimming Team and its coach, Ben Hewitt, and his talented coaching staff deserve recognition and have earned a rightful place at the top of their sport. And whereas the achievement of the 2023 Women's Swimming Team is something all of South Florida, especially the town of Davie, home of Nova Southeastern University, can take pride in this historic accomplishment, setting an example of excellence that all athletic teams aspire to but so few ever achieve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim Friday, May 5, 2023, as Nova Southeastern University Women's Swim Team Day. I got that. That was, that was a tongue tool. Nova Southeastern University Women's Swim Team Day. I got that out there. Would you like to say a few words?
Finns up.
I'm gonna introduce the, uh, fins up. And if one wasn't enough, and not to be outdone by men's basketball, congratulations to the Women's Swim Team. Unfortunately, a lot of the students are gone. We had last week of classes, but, you know, we'll certainly get this back to them. But at this time, I'd like to introduce to you the national coach of the year in the NCAA, Coach Ben Hewitt.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, members of the town council. It's an honor to be here. As a, I guess, a former resident of the town, it's always nice to, to be recognized here in this community for the great work that we get to do. And I certainly want to just take a moment to recognize the women that are here. We have Solana Kapalbo from, she's from Howlandale, but she's also from Argentina. Okay. We have Claire Gass, a sophomore from Salina, Ohio. And we have Mai Loi, a national champion in the 400 individual medley as well as the 800 freestyle relay. And she is from Israel, and she has joined us here today. As you mentioned, collectively, they did earn 11 national championships. And I want to point out that all 12 of the women that went to the meet were named First Team All-Americans. So, we're very excited about the opportunity that they've had to, to, to be here today and for the honor of just winning the championship and how exciting that was. And they're also great students as well. I think we were well above a 3.5 this past semester, so we're hoping, fingers crossed, for this one as well. But again, thank you very much for everything that you guys have done for us, and we are proud servants to the community. And I know that our kids love to come over here and swimming, our pool is closed. So, hopefully, Ian doesn't get too mad at us when we show up all at once. But we'll work on that in the future. But we appreciate this, and thank you very much.
Two national championships in one night. Boy, that's absolutely fabulous. Fins up and hip hip hooray. Congratulations. For the Public Service Recognition Week, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved. To approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we're, we're presenting two of these, one to the FOPA, Sarah Pereira, and one to the FOP Officer John Pelatak, Pelatak, rather, excuse me. Carol?
Certainly. Thank you.
Certainly.
Certainly. Three Stooges, let's say. Proclamation. Whereas every day our nation's civil servants help make America better, safer, and stronger, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas Public Service Recognition Week...
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I forgot they were giving a third one, too, to the IAFF, Captain Eric Reining. I'm sorry, I forgot you. Is he here?
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, okay. I see, I got that in right away. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 that's fine. It's good to be mayor.
Thank you.
Whereas Public Service Recognition Week is time set aside to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And whereas for more than 30 years, PSRW has served as a dedicated opportunity to celebrate public servants across the country and throughout the public sector. Federal, state, and local employees, city managers, nonprofit experts, and more are all honored during this time for the ways in which they support and care for members of the public. And whereas the purpose of celebrating this week is to admire and honor the people who deliver a public service to us and make everyday chores possible for us. From transportation services, roads, and pavements we travel on, we make use of many government-sponsored facilities daily. And to those who keep us safe, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, EMS, professionals, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others that risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world, it is thanks to the efforts of public service employees that we can go about our daily lives. Excuse me. And whereas without these public service servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 to 13, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, city, and tribal.
I thought I read that wrong.
Madam Mayor, council members, and administrative staff, on behalf of the civilian public servants, I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you for your appreciation and recognition provided during this Public Service Week. We greatly appreciate the acknowledgement and look forward to serving you this year.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, administrators, and public. My name is Eric Reining. I'm the president of Local 2315, Town of Davie Professional Firefighters. Thanks, first off, I want to thank everyone in the council for the recognition of the hard work of our membership, firefighters, and our paramedics. We have exceptional employees that perform every day at a high level. We're able to do that because of the dedication of the firefighters to perfecting their craft, the expertise and leadership of our administration, and of course, the unyielding support of our mayor, our council members, and our town administration. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for the recognition.
Good evening, Mayor Judy Paul, Town Council members, Mr. Lemack. On behalf of the Davie FOP, we just want to appreciate your support, everything you guys do for us. You make our job a pleasure to work for you guys and the community you serve. So, thank you again.
Mayor, can I just take something real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. This, this proclamation happens to mean an awful lot to me because...
Speak into the mic, please.
This proclamation means an awful lot to me because my heart is, my father was a lieutenant in the New York City Police Department. So, every time I hear somebody congratulating our first responders and all our public servants, it really touches me.
I could throw in, too, that I, my grandfather was, was a fire chief. He founded the fire department in my hometown of Richfield Park, New Jersey. So, that goes back many years. Yes, feels very good. And we certainly appreciate all the hard work of all the individuals, the public servants in the town of Davie.
Thank you.
We are, we are truly a family. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation Jewish American History Month?
Motion to approve proclamation Jewish.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Accepting this proclamation will be the Honorable Richard Stark, who served four terms in the Florida, in the Florida House of Representatives. My tongue's not working tonight. From 2012 to 2020, then he was termed out. But right now, he still is working very diligently within the community as the Chair of the Broward County Jewish Democratic Caucus, and he's going to be accepting this proclamation, which I'm going to read. And it's appropriate because we're now celebrating the 75th anniversary of the State of Israel. And if anybody was lucky enough to see it, the night that they lit up the, the hard rock guitar in blue with, with the Jewish star, which was very, very nice. On April 20, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month, capping an historic achievement by an impressive group led by the Jewish Museum of Florida and South Florida Jewish Community Leaders, which eventually resulted in congressional resolutions introduced by Representative Debbie Marchman Schultz and Senator Arlen Specter. And whereas JAM, which is referred to, recognizes the more than 360-year history of Jewish contributions to American culture and society, from sports, arts, music, and entertainment in history, to medicine, business, science, government, and military service. Jewish Americans have created lives for themselves and their families and played indispensable roles in our nation's civic and community life, making invaluable contributions to our nation through their leadership and achievements. And whereas many Jewish people who reached America did so after fleeing oppression, in some cases amid the most grim and gruesome of human experiences during the Holocaust, and did so with the hope of realizing the true promise of building a freer and more just America. And whereas many Jewish women and men made lifelong commitments to confront the enemy of America's noblest goals, racism and oppression, they found solidarity in the civil rights movement, in the fight for women and LGBT rights, and in struggles which often mirrored the story of Exodus and the Jewish people's journey through the ages. And whereas the rise in antisemitism demands that all Americans know the lesson, lessons of the Holocaust, we recognize that there is an urgent imperative to continually combat prejudice before it firmly takes root. The recent emergence of violent antisemitism aimed at places of worship requires that we recommit through action and solidarity that an attack on the faith of one is an attack on the faith of all. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month pays tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who have helped form the fabric of American history, now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Davie do proclaim the month of May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. Thank you.
Certainly.
Your Honor, Madam Mayor, Town Council Members, thanking, thank you for asking me to come and accept this proclamation. I want to say it was an honor to be able to represent the town of Davie and the state legislature for eight years, really have a great place here. I really was excited. I gotta tell you, I think the proclamations tonight, seeing Nova Southeastern, when I first moved here 50 years ago, they're like one or two buildings on campus, and then to turn on the television and seeing, you know, the men's basketball team playing for the championship, it was really exciting to see how this, you know, how the university has grown and the town of Davie itself has grown as well. Jewish Americans have, you know, made significant contributions to America. And I read today that one of the reasons that May was chosen is that the first Jews to North America actually came with the Dutch in the 1600s when they first settled in what was New Amsterdam, which is now, of course, New York City. And, you know, I'm honored, of course, that the United States of America recognizes, you know, Jewish American Heritage Month, but I also want to say that, you know, we do share this month with two other groups, with, you know, with Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and also with older Americans. And I, you know, I'm glad that we do share that month with them because they deserve, you know, great honor as well. You know, when, every day I turn on the news, you know, I see governors, local officials, the President of the United States constantly, you know, talking about what we can do, you know, for antisemitism. We talk about the Holocaust. We have Holocaust Month. Last month, Israel's 75th anniversary as a, as a, as a new country. But yet, no matter what we do, antisemitism is with us. It, it, I would hope then this might, this day that we really wouldn't be seeing it, but it continues to grow. And that's not just antisemitism, it's all forms of bigotry. I mean, the best I can say is, I mean, I'm glad that the, that, you know, the town like Davie, you know, addresses this. It's got to just keep going on. And, and the best, I mean, I'm hoping and praying, and I hope we all will, you know, that we live in a, you know, time in the future, and, you know, I'm not gonna quote, you know, Martin Luther King verbatim, but basically, you know, a time where individuals would be judged as individuals and not as people by their skin color, you know, where they came from or their religion. But again, thank you very much. This is an honor. Thank you.[1778.63] Thank you.[578.41][578.41](applause).
May I have a motion to approve number five, Mental Health Awareness Month?
Motion to approve number five, Mental Health Awareness Month.
Accepting this proclamation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Accepting this is Gail and Alan Geese.
Actually, just Gail tonight.
Just Gail tonight, and Councilmember Starkey will be reading it.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas National Alliance of Mental Illness, known as NAMI, Broward's mission is to bring awareness and programs to Broward County in support of world-class treatment and recovery systems for people with mental illness. NAMI Broward works to provide support, education, and advocacy to foster better understanding, coping strategies, and positive outcomes for people and their families affected by mental illness. And whereas mental illnesses are mental illnesses which are common and treatable, whereas good health care includes mental health care, which must be accessible to all people regardless of race, gender, age, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, values, and cultural beliefs. It is essential that these factors be considered as part of the treatment so that shared community can be a source of strength. And whereas the depth of the mental health crisis for children and adults is staggering, one in five adults will experience mental illness in any given year, half of all mental illnesses begin by the age of 14, and 75% begin by 24 years old. Earlier treatment means better outcomes, and whereas half the children and adults living in mental illness never receive life-changing treatment due to the lack of access of care and stigma, the resilience and recovery of people living with mental illness diagnosis should be celebrated rather than stigmatized. And whereas mental illness is not a crime, however inmates and mental health diagnoses are over-presented in jails and in prisons. NAMI applauds crisis intervention training for law enforcement officers, diversion programs, and mobile crisis response teams, and that effectively decrease justice system involvement and increase safety. Whereas people with mental illnesses are able to live meaningful lives and make important and valuable contributions. Communities support those with mental illnesses by ensuring access to quality care and appropriate support. Whereas NAMI Broward County observes the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month and raises awareness of mental health to encourage those living with mental illnesses to help, to seek help, and uplift by our messages, "You are not alone." Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month.[804.23][804.23](applause).
Thank you so much, Mayor Paul, and Councilwoman Starkey, and the whole Davie Town Council. I am a Davie resident, and serious mental illness affected our family about 15 years ago, and NAMI Broward was there for us, offering support classes, connections, to resources, advocacy, and, and education. So I want you all to know, everyone here tonight, if you know anyone who needs help, who is experiencing mental illness perhaps for the first time in their families, please refer them to NAMI Broward. We are, we are there for your residents, and you can visit us at NAMI Broward, that's N-A-M-I Broward.org. And I also want to mention that you can call 988, it's confidential, and it's the new number for the suicide prevention and behavioral health crises line. So 988, or you can also call 211. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[889.01][889.01](applause). Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve number six, National Historic Preservation Month?
Motion to approve number six, National Historic Preservation Month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Accepting this is Leslie Schroeder from our Old Davie School Historic Museum, and our liaison to the Historic Preservation Board, Mr.?
David Abramson.
David Abramson, right. I was going to say Quigley. I get them mixed up. Reading this tonight will be Councilmember Whitman.
Whereas May is National Historic Preservation Month, which provides an opportunity for citizens to recognize the important role that historic preservation plays in their communities. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for fostering local pride, maintaining community character, and enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is supported by the town of Davie and its Historic Preservation Board. And whereas the town of Davie is a certified local government, which is a national program designated to encourage the direct participation of a local government in the identification and preservation of historic resources. And whereas the town of Davie desires to preserve and maintain its historic resources and keep the town a unique and special place. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month.[1018.01][1018.01](applause).
So I just want to say thank you, Mayor Paul, thank you, Councilmembers, thank you, Mr. Quigley, thank you, Mr. David, and Mr. Lemack. You guys, you are so passionate about preservation in this town, as and I'm sure you know, you should have made it May 10th, because May 10th, the school will turn 105 years old. So to have, we are the oldest existing school building in Broward County on its original site, we are the oldest, no, we are the biggest collection of historic buildings in the county. So thanks to you guys, you guys have all taken this on, and we do appreciate it, thank you.[1065.08][1065.08](applause). I'm sorry? Yes, thank you, thank you, that was very nice.
May I have a motion to approve Water Safety Month?
Motion to approve Water Safety Month.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We gave Michelle a double.
Whereas the town of Davie recognizes the vital role that swimming and aquatics-related activities play in ensuring good physical and mental health, as well as enhancing the quality of life for all. And whereas the town of Davie acknowledges the essential role that water safety education contributes to the prevention of drowning and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas the month of May is recognized as National Water Safety Month through an annual awareness campaign coordinated by the Pool and Hot Tub Alliance, with support from the American Red Cross, National Recreation and Park Association, and World Water Park Association. And whereas residents of the town of Davie recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on safety in and around the water. And whereas aquatic programs in the town of Davie encompasses a multitude of activities which include water safety education that can result in personal accomplishments, self-satisfaction, and family unity for all citizens regardless of their background, ability, level, or age. And whereas the town of Davie is extremely proud of their award-winning aquatics facilities, Pine Island Park Pool, Betty Booth Roberts Park Pool, the Shenandoah Splash Pad, as well as the aquatic programs adopted for our community. And the contributions in providing to all ages a place to recreate, learn to swim, build self-esteem, confidence, sense of self-worth, which contributes to the quality of the life in our community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Water Safety Month.
Awesome.[1198.21][1198.21](applause).
Aye.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Administration. My name is Ian Forrest, I'm the Fitness and Aquatics Coordinator, and I'm accompanied by Rashawn Williams, who is our Aquatic Crew Leader. We would like to thank you for your support with this proclamation, as the month of May is essential for us in advocating positive water safety habits. During this month, we will be hosting our Water Safety Day on May 20th from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at our Pine Island Fitness and Aquatic Center, where we will have different stations promoting safety tips in and around water. Additionally, we have partnered with our Fire Department to promote our Safer by Four Initiative, where we provide educational resources for town residents in creating a safe environment at their home pools. And then finally, we have a year-round Learn Swim program, and we teach individuals of all ages key life safety skills. Thank you again for this proclamation, we appreciate it.
Congratulations.[1247.58][1247.58](applause). Doing a great job. May I have a motion to approve proclamation number eight, Small Businesses Month?
Motion to approve Small Business Month proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Accepting this will be, is everybody here? Anthony, Tony Lassie, Andrea, John Baptiste, that's you?
Yes.
Deborah Langford's not here? Oh, come on up. And Raphael Cruz?
He was not able to join.
Two out of four, that's pretty good. Reading this will be Vice Mayor Lewis.
Whereas the mayor and town council of the town of Davie recognizes that small businesses are the backbone and lifeblood of our local economies, and the community and service job creators and place markers throughout Davie. And whereas shopping locally allows Davie residents to invest in their own community and grow the viability of their neighborhoods, making Davie the best place to live, work, learn, and play. And whereas small businesses demonstrate resilience, adaptability, flexibility, and courage in the face of adversities and other unplanned economic downturns. And whereas small businesses serve an important role in assessing economic opportunities. And whereas the town of Davie's partnership with Florida Atlantic University, FAU, Small Business Development Center, SBDC, serves entrepreneurs and small businesses throughout the town and across all industries through confidential, no-cost consulting, and professional training. And whereas the SBDC team is trained and equipped to address a variety of businesses' needs regardless of trade or sector. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the town council of the town of Davie do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Small Business Month.[1384.42][1384.42](applause).
Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you, Town of Davie, for the significant recognition of Small Business Month. I am Andrea John Baptiste, and I'm a proud growth specialist with the Small Business Development Center at Florida Atlantic University, and with me is Deborah Langford, who is our Associate Director and International Trade Specialist. Unfortunately, the town's liaison, Tony Lassie, was not able to join us this evening, unfortunately, had a family emergency. But yes, small businesses are the backbone of our local economies, and we are proud to be part of a system and network that supports business starts and expansions. Our most recent statewide data shows that the Florida SBDC network has supported 18,000 clients, impacting 29,000 jobs with fiscal impact of over $6.7 million, and so we are very proud and very thankful for the recognition. For 2022, members of our team have had the support of the town council in providing consulting, technical assistance, trainings, assistance with government contracting, and other business development services, over 114 consulting sessions provided by 19 of our team members. The other 17 could not join us today. For a total of 361 hours to 47 businesses of diverse leadership, including those owned by veterans. Arts and entertainment, manufacturing, and wholesale businesses represented the industries to which the majority of consulting hours were provided, resulting in 126 new and retained jobs and a fiscal impact of $1.3 million. We are particularly appreciative of working alongside Ms. Leona Henry and the town's business and economic development teams in attaining these positive outcomes. We look forward to continuing this far-reaching partnership and invite small businesses and everyone else to join us next Wednesday, May 10th, at 10:00 a.m. here across the hallway for our Building a Bankable Business Training with me, Tony Lassie, and Brian O'Connor, the town's procurement manager. As we acknowledge and celebrate Small Business Month this Small Business Week, we encourage you to support, to continue to support small businesses, so shop small for big impact. Thank you.[1545.22][1545.22](applause).
I like that line. And now we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. What? Yes, we do. Huh?
It didn't come down this far.
Did I, did I call for it?
That was the first thing we did, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number 28 is the CDVG Action Plan Amendment. Mr. Weinfall, would you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution to the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Action Plan, provided for conflict, provided for separability, and provided for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public, this is a public hearing, wishes to speak for or against this? You may step forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion from council?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the CB, DBG Action Plan, and a second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good job. Number 29, Budget Amendment, Mr. Weinfall, would you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida, authorizing the Second Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023 budget, provided for conflict, provided for separability, and provided for an effective date.
This is a final reading. If there's anyone who wishes to speak for or against this, you may come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any council member have any questions or comments? Okay. May I have a motion to approve number 29 Budget Amendment?
Motion to approve 29 Budget Amendment.
And there's a second?
Second.
Town Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 30 is a code amendment. Would you, Mr. Weinfall, would you please go read this by title? This is a first reading.
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 18, Alcoholic Beverages, provided for conflict, provided for separability, and provided for an effective date.
Thank you very much. The second hearing will be, public hearing will be on May 17th. This is a public opportunity, anybody that wishes to speak from the public may come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or concerns?
No.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the code amendment number 30?
Motion to approve code amendment number 30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Town Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 31 is a code amendment, Mr. Weinfall, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 9, Rural Lifestyle Regulations, Division 1, Generally. Division 2, Scenic Corridors, Overland. Division 2 Scenic Corridors Overlay District, Division 3 Rural Lifestyle Development Regulations, Division 4 Site Design Regulations, and Division 5 Open Space Design Overlay, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. The public hearing on this will be on May 17th. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against this may come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion from council? As I went over this very, very carefully with Mr. Quigley, and it's a lot of clarification and elimination of duplication, so I think it's an important, important move.
And I also appreciate the time that David and David gave me to help go over my concerns too, so thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve number 31?
Motion to approve number 31 Code Amendment.
Second?
Second.
I can second too, so I second it.
Go ahead.
Town Clerk, please have a roll call.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we come to 32, which is quasi-judicial public hearing, variance. And at this point, we're going to take 25, 26, 27, and 32 on the, let's say, site plan, a plat, flex allocation, and the variance for Davis South. Mr. Weinfall, is the quasi?
Quasi has been waived, yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
We've taken them together?
Yeah, we're doing all of them together first. We're going to have to read each one individually. Would you like to do that?
Yes, Mayor. Item number 25, Site Plan SP21-153 Davis South. Item number 26, a plat, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, approving a plat known as Davis South, and authorizing the mayor and town clerk to acknowledge the approval by affixing the mayor's signature and the town seal to said plat, providing for conflict, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 27, Flex, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, approving Flex Application FX23-062 Davis South for the allocation of residential flexibility in accordance with the Broward County Land Use Plan, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 32, variance, a resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on various application V23-029 Davis South, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Well, I think it would be a good idea to have a presentation before or after we have the public hearing, Mr. Weinfall? Mr. Weinfall?
I'm sorry.
Should we do the presentations before the public hearing?
It's at your leisure.
Oh, okay. All right, let's have Mr. Quigley, and then we'll have Mr. Abramson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. David Abramson, representing town staff. The subject site is approximately 21.2 acres in size and is generally located on the northwest corner of Davie Road and southwest 37th Street. The overall proposal would allow the development of four five-story residential multifamily buildings consisting of 383 dwelling units, as well as 6,450 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor facing Davie Road. There's also a freestanding two-story private community clubhouse within the development. Other community amenities include a pool, totlot, pocket parks, plaza areas, which are going to be constructed and maintained by the developer. The developer is also requesting five design variations. Town staff has no objections to these requests, and they include building setback, length of street lots, building transitions, as well as parking lot setbacks and screening from Davie Road. Additionally, the developer is seeking a variance from town code to allow a landscape buffer to meander between 0 to 8 and 1/2 feet in width along Davie Road. Town code normally requires 20 feet in this case. Lastly, the developer meets the town inclusionary housing requirements by providing a combination of affordable units, 55, as well as paying in lieu of contribution to the town's Affordable Housing Fund. The developers completed the public participation requirements. Within the backup, there are conditions of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, I'll hold my comments.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
One of the things that, you know, I've looked at the site plan, I've looked and read, and what I didn't see is any other parking other than surface parking. Is there going to be cross-parking between Broward College? And how are they going to prevent that from happening since there's so many units being proposed?
Okay. The parking is within the 21 acres that the site plan is being approved for. They're not utilizing as part of the parking calculation anything outside the subject site. They do have a gated community, so that would restrict from anybody from the school just using their parking at any point in time.
Okay, and maybe I looked at it funny, but I thought that some of the area that's being developed was also used as previous surface parking. So how, for the college, so how is that college going to accommodate the additional spacing that's needed, parking spaces that are needed?
And I apologize, they are providing some parking spaces along the southern property line. It's still for the development, but I'll let the applicant answer that question, but there is some open spacing along the southern property line as well.
Because I'm aware that they did the garage parking in two different areas, but I didn't know if that was to accommodate or if that would be sufficient for the college at this time?
We didn't, yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't look at the college parking requirements. We were looking at the subject site when it came in and whether or not it made the requirements.
Taking away some of the college parking, it seemed like you needed to look at both.
I'll let the applicant respond to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. Would you like me to answer that question first? So I was just checking with the college, and I thought I knew the answer, and they confirmed it. There's a master plan for the college. It requires a certain amount of parking. Even with what's being removed, they still have more than they're required to have. Keep in mind, we're also removing a college building. I've got some graphics I can show. So the building comes out, the parking comes out, we go in, we're gated and fenced, and the college still has enough parking for their own uses outside that gate and fence. I also have pictures if you'd like me to show them, or I could just answer questions if you have questions, whatever you prefer.
Do you have questions? Do you want to see the pictures?
All right.
He's a visual.
I'll do it quickly. You're pulling, somebody's pulling them up, right? Thank you. And if I say next slide, you'll do the next slide? Thank you very much.
And since you're up there, may I ask another question?
Of course.
Okay, I know that we've always had a lot, and I know, I think I know the answer by reviewing the site plan, but we've always had a lot of problems with the drainage in that area. And so I'm sure that in order to get approvals, you had to meet the sufficient drainage for, and hold your own water outside.
That's correct.
So are you also providing additional drainage for the existing parking lots of Broward College as well?
Yes, I have a slide I'll show in a minute that shows you all the drainage improvements we're making.
That's what I thought I saw.
If you go to the next slide, please. So this is our site, the southeast portion of the campus. Go to the next slide. And this is just zeroing in on it a little bit. You can see the parking that would come out. You can see that little piece of building that comes out. Go to the next slide, please. So this is our site plan. Again, I've got Davie Road on the right, 37th would be at the bottom. You see the lake we're putting in. We're enlarging the lake that's there, making it much bigger. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is the plat. There's really nothing exciting to look at there. We'll go to the next slide, please. This is the variance that was discussed, number 32. It is largely the area next to the lake where we wanted to pull that lake up so you could actually see it from the road, although there is landscaping in front of that lake, between the lake and the road. Go to the next slide, please. And this is showing you that landscaping that is between the lake and the road. All of those green dots you see, those are existing palm trees. They're already there, so we don't want to take them out. And then we're putting in new trees next to them, which are canopy trees. So that's the treatment right along the edge of the lake. Go to the next slide, please. This is just showing you that vista along Davie Road today and the little cross-section of what we're doing. If you can go to the next slide. This is the one I wanted to show. So you see that there are lakes on the campus, but they are not connected. So we're going to be connecting all of those lakes by pipes, which is what you're supposed to do. And we're also increasing the size of the lakes. So Lake Number One is currently 4.9 acres. We're increasing it to 6.46. So that's an increase of just a little bit more than 1 and 1/2 acres on that lake. Lake Two, which is in the southwest corner of the campus, that stays the same, although it will be connected by pipes. Lake Three, which is on our site that we're talking about tonight, is currently 2.1 acres. We're making it 3.14, so we're adding a little bit more than an acre there. And then Lake Four is 2.04 acres now. We're bringing it up to 2.62. So we're doing a 28 and 1/2% increase on the amount of lakes on the campus, plus we're connecting them by pipes. So it's going to work and drain much better than it did in the past. If you go to the next slide, please. And then this is the outfall that takes the stormwater down to the C11. So really, I think that's all I needed to show. If you had any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much. You can go back to the site plan just in case there's questions. Thank you.
Let me open this to the public at this point, and we'll come back and... Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak for or against this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then. All right, I've got a few things. Yeah, I had some of the same concerns about the parking, and we kind of talked that through, but I just want to ask you to, when you do the second phase, to keep in mind the concern that we have for parking, to make sure that there's enough parking. I don't know how much commercial, I know you're not having that much commercial on this part, but you're having more on the second phase?
The amount of commercial we'll have in the second phase will still be relatively small, but we'll make sure that...
But still, you've got to make sure that, because we've had this happen before, because you make these plans, but then you do these studies, but it doesn't always work that way, and then you have a problem. Because people don't want to walk a long distance if they want to go to a coffee shop or, you know, go to a restaurant or whatever it is might be there. They want a convenient area for parking, and you have to make sure that you're benefiting those commercial endeavors by giving them enough parking.
Understood.
To run their business. But then again, I know there are certain things that'll occur that maybe not all the businesses will be open all the time, so I know that's a consideration, but I'd like you to take a look at that a little more closely.
We will.
Okay. The other thing is, and I don't know whether this will come under the plat or the flex units, but I think I'll just make a general statement to start. So we have this inclusionary housing program that requires large residential developments to set aside at least 20% of the new units, you know, to be affordable. Davis Project now has 383 units in total, meaning that 77 units must be affordable. As presented, the Davis South is proposing 55 affordable units for an affordability rate of just under 15%, while making up the difference through the contribution, which was indicated before, to the Housing Trust Fund affordability and what we call payment in lieu of. I'm requesting that the developer commit to the full 20%, 77 units as affordable housing units with no payment in lieu of.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
I think that, you know, and this has to do with allocating the flex units and so forth and so on, and I think that we're so mindful of the need for the affordable housing that I think at this particular point, building them now will be much better than putting it aside and saving it to build something later on, so would you be willing to commit to that?
Let me just ask one question first, and then depending on what you say, I will then answer your original question. So we're doing 1/7, which is part of this county Affordable Housing Bonus Density Program, so it's a little bit short of 15%, as you mentioned. We're paying, we're proposing to pay the difference in the in lieu payment between the 15% and the 20%, which would be a payment of $24,200. We would also be willing to still build the 15% and pay the full fee of $320,000, if that would be acceptable.
How do you feel about that, Carol? I think that we're more in need of those 20 units, and it... Yeah.
If it's the desire that we build the full 20% on the site, which is 77 units of affordable instead of 55, we will do it.
Okay. Is there any, do you all agree with that? Okay, very good. Thank you. And then as far as the landscaping... Yeah, well, we're going to have to make a motion, so we're going to work on that as we go along. I would like to see some more shade trees, as I had indicated before, and there was a question of reducing the landscape buffer, or no trees in a certain area so that they could have, residents could have a full view of the lake. I think that some plantings along the lake would enhance the view, especially, you know, red maples, cypress, things that do well with water, near the water.
Could I ask you to go to that slide that shows the lake and the road and the trees? So unfortunately, Central Broward will not allow us to plant trees, that's the one, thank you, plant trees in the lake maintenance easement, but we do have room in between the lake maintenance easement and the roadway itself, and I think if you go to the next slide, it'll show. So like I was mentioning earlier, the ones in green are existing palm trees that we'll keep there. The ones that are in black and white are new trees. We can certainly substitute a different species, like you mentioned, if that was appropriate. There's also some places within the property itself where we could substitute shade trees for palm trees. If you just let us work with your staff and your landscape consultant, we'll find spots to switch it out like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just writing this out, so...
This reminds me of the old days at the Site Plan Committee when Mr. Breslow would keep track of all of the amendments.
Yeah. Right here. I got you. Let me see if I have anything else here. I think I have no issue with the variations. Went over that with staff. And then when I talked about more parking, they were showing where it could go, but that would take away green space, so I had, I kind of nixed that. We want as much green space there as we possibly can have.
Understood.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, now, what do we put where?
So the site... The site plan would be the best, would be the most applicable item for the, what Mr. Mealy just agreed to.
For which item?
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing, okay. And the landscaping?
Site Plan 2.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take the site plan first. We approve the site plan. Are these recommendations from staff all in relationship to the site plan, or are they varied?
Yes, all on the site plan.
Okay. So the motion should be to approve with all of the recommendations of staff.
You could say-
With the exception of-
Go for it.
(laughing) The adding 22 units in the affordable housing, and to allow them to work with staff on adding shade trees in the appropriate area for the landscaping. Yes?
Want me to make the motion, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Okay. Site Plan, item number 25, Davis South.
Mayor, hold on one second. I just want to clarify, so the motion incorporates that in lieu of the payment for $24,000, the applicant will construct the 77.
Correct.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that's in there.
Yeah, because I said that when I said, accepting the staff recommendations with the exception of adding the 22 of affordable-
Right, but removing the 24,000.
Making it a total of 77, okay.
I'll try it again. Motion to approve, item number 25, Davis South, with the recommendations of the 10 items recommended by staff to include a total of 77 units of affordable housing, which is the full allocation. Also, to work with staff on landscaping shade trees.
In appropriate areas.
In the appropriate areas.
Don't you have to put the money, then you just say you have to put the amount of money?
And take out the payment in lieu, which was $24,000.
Yeah, that part, take that, put it in. Remove the payment in lieu.
Yeah, there you go.
Got it?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are any of these-
May I just ask a question real fast before I go? Mr. Mealy?
Wait a minute. None of these need a second reading, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's done deal, okay. Yes, Carol.
Mr. Mealy, where did the title come for this, the Davis South? I'm just curious, just a curious question.
Where did the title come from?
Yeah, the name of the development, Davis South.
Let me introduce my client. He's the one who came up with it.
Sorry, I'm just-
Candidly, we just love the town and wanted something that would be grounded in where it is.
So we wanted something almost like Davie, but not exactly-
Almost like Davie, but not exactly Davie, and so-
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know where the Davis came from.
We like to create projects that are grounded in where they are and have a sense of identity of the surrounding.
That's fine, thank you. I was just, didn't know where Davis came from.
Okay. I'm curious, Betty Davis. So we're taking care of the site plan. We'll take the plat, number 26, next. Now, I think the plat also has to be adjusted, too, to recognize the inclusionary unit.
So if I could, if I could, on the plat note, we would make the modification to recognize the 77 versus the 55.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the plat with the addition of the additional inclusionary housing units?
Motion to- Sorry, I thought you were-
Total of 77, they're shown on the plat.
Motion to include the plat with inclusion of the 77 total affordable housing units.
Yes.
Second?
Hold on one second.
Do we have to add?
The plat doesn't actually recommend, it just, it's units only. It doesn't recognize affordability.
Oh, it doesn't?
You don't need to do that.
Okay, so then just-
I said the wrong thing.
Never mind. But you and I both know, Dennis, if it's on the plat note, it's recorded.
It'll be 77, whether it's in there or not, it'll be 77.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And there'll be, never be a question.
That's right.
So there's a motion.
Backing up, I agree.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 27 is the flex units. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve 27 flex units.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 32 is the variance. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion, whoops. Motion to approve the variance.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have any committee or board appointments?
No.
Planning and zoning board appointment, did everybody get to read the reviews of different people that are on the list?
I did, but I didn't get a chance to call him. I've been swamped with legislation, so crazy stuff.
Yeah, well, it would be nice to have a full complement-
No, I agree.
-of the board.
I just wanted to point that out. It's kind of time-sensitive, because sometimes they have supermajority items, so it's, we really need the committee to be full, the board.
Is there anybody else that has a problem? We nominate somebody now, even if one person hasn't spoken to them?
I have no problem.
Hmm? I have no problem. What was the gentleman's name again? Noto?
It's Nicholas Noto.
Nicholas Noto.
Noto?
Noto.
Sorry.
Yeah.
For what?
For site, for-
Planning and zoning.
He's a lawyer, so.
Yeah.
I'd rather wait.
You want to wait? Again, you know, did you do anything to review any of them?
Yeah, I'll have it by the next one.
Okay. Please try to do that, too, Susan, then.
I will.
Because you've got to keep in mind with the supermajority-
This is the last week of session. I can, I'll have time next week.
Okay, Susan, you're on for number 35.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you may recall, the Town Council had appointed Donna Evans and myself to represent the town on the South Broward Utilities Advisory Board. We met on Thursday, which was April 27. The board met and had different representations from the various entities that are serviced in the West Davie and Pembroke Pines, Weston and Southwest Ranches area. They were required, whenever there is, like, a proposed change in rate structure, they're required, under legislation, which was enacted by House Bill 4463, to meet as a council, advisory council, and then come up and approve whether or not it should be transmitted to the Sunrise County, City Commission for adoption. They did make the recommendations to accept Raftalis, Raftalus, rather, did the 2023 Water and Wastewater Revenue Study with the premise that they wanted it to be mostly revenue-neutral, which would mean there would be very little increases for most of the residential folks on the middle section. They are going to a tiered process, so the base rate will go up on the zero to, like, 10,000, under 10,000, and then you'd have increases subsequently from there, and then on the higher-rate users. The rate structure is designed similar to ours because they want to encourage people to not consume so much water, and so that's why they're going forward, like we did, with a variation to this five-tier rate structure. It was unanimously supported to go forward, and it's going to be transmitted in 30 days from the 27th to the City of Sunrise for their rate adoption, and there'll be two public hearings prior to the meeting to hear the item. So I just wanted to fill you in on what we did.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, let us know.
I think it's clear. Thank you. Okay, let's go. We have a meeting May 17th, June 7th, and then a nice break till July 26th. Councilmember Whitman, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Last Friday, April 28th, was recognized as Arbor Day. It gave Councilmember Hatton and I an opportunity to grab our gardening gloves so that we could make a difference in our community. We were lucky enough to participate in an Arbor Day tree planting event at St. Bernadette School. I think it is one of the first Arbor Day events we've had since 2019, and the first I have participated in since my appointment as a council member. I was really impressed by the interest shown by the students in planting trees and learning about safe forestry tips. They were so excited to interact, not only with our staff, but also with Smokey the Bear. An event like this, and the work that goes into making this happen, is not easy, and as such, I want to extend my thanks to our Public Works team, who was hands-on with everything and had all the operations figured out. Special mention to a few members of our Public Works team, and I'm going to apologize in case I mess up your names. First one is Tim, Vince, Kevin, Beatrice, Carlos, Carone, Danielle, Casivi, and Natasha. Ozdel, please share my thanks with your team. In case you did not know, we have a celebrity among us. There are so many positive words we can use to describe our Human Resource Director, Grace. But now, I think we have to add celebrity. She was featured in a New York Times article last week, which I must say was really nice. The article illustrated the important work Grace and her team continue to provide to our staff. Grace, I want to congratulate you on this significant recognition, and now that you are more famous, let me know if I can get your autograph after the meeting. I'd love to see when our staff shines, not only in the town, but nationwide. Another plug for the 2024 Community Forums. At the last council meeting, I mentioned that the meetings will begin soon, and now that we have completed two, we have four more coming up in the next couple of weeks. On Wednesday, May 10th, we will have another forum at Ivanhoe Community Center, and on May 11th, the forum will take place at Sunny Lake Bird Sanctuary. All community forums begin at 6:30 PM. I'd also like to say thank you to the lady with the red shoes on. Of course, it's our first meeting in May, and I could not leave without wishing all the May babies a happy and wonderful birthday. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, April 20th, our Public Works team led a community meeting regarding the Little Country States project. At that meeting, we had approximately 100 people in attendance who wanted to know everything about the project. Everyone was engaged and interested in learning about the project's scope and timeline. I'm happy to announce that this project started on Monday, and hopefully this project will bring some much-needed relief to the community. This project was about the pipes and the flooding that we've had in this area, and that the town is starting this project to help give us some relief in that area. Last night, in the Shenandoah Community Center, we had Mr. Lemack lead us and many of our managers here in the town in attendance to speak about the town and what was going on, and there was a lot of dialogue and conversation, and I appreciate Mr. Lemack and everyone that came there and spoke, and it was a good turnout, and I appreciate all the work that went into that. Oh, one thing I forgot about is the Touch Truck that is coming this Saturday at the rodeo grounds from 9:00 AM to noon, and that's a great event for the kids, and so take note of that. Thank you, Mayor. We got all about that.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the first things I'd like to do is talk about House Bill 269, which was signed by the governor today. You may be aware of the bill, and what it did was, it prohibits persons from harassing, threatening, or intimidating other persons based on wearing something that significantly shows their religious affiliation or ethnic heritage, or including any traditional Jewish garb. It also prohibits dumping literature in people's yards, which you probably saw on the news, and many other things that it would prohibit, but it also creates a new trespass offense if the person who is not authorized or invited willfully to enter a campus or a college or university for the purpose of threatening or intimidating another person, also based on maybe perhaps discriminations. Earlier this year, the FBI released updates that the crime statistics demonstrated that over 51% of religion-related hate crimes were anti-Jewish incidences. Through House Bill 269, the above offenses are all now punishable as a first-degree misdemeanor, and if the violation involves a credible threat, can be increased to a third-degree felon, giving law enforcement officers more resources to fight against antisemitism and the attacks. I'm sure that many of you did get a chance to see the article that might have been floating around by Representative Dan Daley as he sponsored this bill, but the most wonderful thing was our own Rabbi Penny was honored and helped facilitate the enactment of this bill up in Tallahassee. Rabbi Penny is pretty remarkable in the way that he addressed some antisemitic slurs that were given by an athlete, and through his kindness, education, and tenacity, he stayed with it for quite a while, establishing a good relationship with this athlete even today. So I think the education was very good, and also supporting this particular House bill. So I think it's very appropriate that it's been signed today, and that's why I thought it was exciting to see that. Also, I gave the update on the South Broward Utility Advisory. They will be meeting again, which is nice, probably for another 10 years. So if you have any comments to that and care about any of the rate increases, don't forget, it should be posted on our website at some point, I hope. Also, I want to talk about some of the other legislation. This is the last week the legislators will be meeting, and the final day, Leona and I can't, it can't come soon enough for both of us, is May 6th, I mean, May 5th, so this is week nine. There were so many bills that were either good or bad that affected our municipalities and many of our residents here back home, and I just really want to reach out to Leona. Thank you so much for helping me see through the weeds of thousands of bills that have been proposed, and helping me focus on getting these action alerts out to our legislators on the few that we were really monitoring. So I want to thank her very much for that. She did a great job in recognizing her for that. There's several workshops that will be held, one's Back to Business, that will be here. It's also on our website, May 10th, as it's coming up, fast approaching, and How to Build a Better Bankable Business. There's several other workshops here. The Splash Pad is closed. My family was kind of sad to see that, so I was hoping we would get that Splash Pad in Shenandoah up and running pretty soon, because the kids were definitely before summer anxious to see that that's going to be repaired. The Housing Assistance Programs also, for first-time home buyers and home repair program, that is also up and running again, so please make sure you work on that. And our Sustainability Awards, it's a good time to recognize somebody that you have, that you want to honor or promote, who promotes our sustainability action in the town of Davie. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. The Arbor Day, I just, to add to Michelle, just, everything was great. It was, it couldn't have been better. Thank you. The Relay for Life on April 22nd was, you're grinning, it was really good. Thank you to Cheryl and Leona and everybody, everybody that did it worked so hard, all of you guys, there are too many to name. The food was excellent, the meatballs were good, everything was good, the prizes were good. I know, because I won one. And it was great. I just found it a little far to go. I thought maybe we could get it back to Weston, I think it would be better off.
It is supposed to be.
Oh, good, okay.
Weston High School next year.
Oh, excellent, that's, that's great. There's one more meeting, community meeting, that you forgot, I believe, the last one, on May 22nd, right here. It's going to be the last one, the community forum, it's going to be here, May 22nd. So I think that's all I have, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to talk about tonight, and I think we have a few more weeks left for people to apply with our art program in the town. for people to apply with our art program in the town, we're looking to wrap some more boxes, utility boxes, in all of the districts, and we're having a contest and inviting artists to participate and present items so they can apply. I think it's online through Parks and Recreation, correct? And so, this is a... This will be really a lot of fun because, you know, the few wraps that we have on the east side here, everybody really likes, and we enjoy seeing that addition to our ride takes away from the pileup of cars trying to get home. That's all that I wanted to talk about today. I'm going to just bow out so that we can sail into the sunset. Mr. Lemack?
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Weintraub?
I have nothing, thank you.
If there's no objections?
No objections.
Or...